Listen up, sorry. If everyone could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Charles Brown and Mark Dancy asked to be excused this evening. Councilman in Barson.
Here.
Theodore Chase.
Here.
Robert LaCourte.
Here.
Shaw Keller.
Here.
Jennifer Ragnow.
Here.
Mahir Rafiq.
Here.
Robert Thomas.
Here.
Rebecca Hilbert.
Here.
Chairman Orsini.
Here. Minutes for the regular meeting of April 16th. If I can have a motion.
Everybody can vote who's here.
Excellent. I will move them.
Second.
Councilman in Barson.
Yes.
Theodore Chase.
Yes.
Robert LaCourte.
Yes.
Shaw Keller.
Yes.
Jennifer Ragnow.
Yes.
Mahir Rafiq.
Yes.
Robert Thomas.
Yes.
Rebecca Hilbert.
Yes.
Chairman Orsini.
Yes. We have no resolutions. We have no discussion items. We'll make a motion to open to the public for any general planning comments.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any general planning comments from the public not related to the two applications tonight, HSU and NPH? See none, move to close?
Make a motion.
I did, just seconded it.
You seconded it.
Oh, I'll second it. All right, fine. All in favor?
Aye.
So, I thought tonight maybe it would be, if it's agreeable, since I believe the attorney is the same for both applicants, to start with NPH.
Sure.
Yeah, there we go. Good evening, members of the board. My name is Matt Flynn from the law firm of Savooshock in Somerville, New Jersey, here tonight representing the applicant, NPH Real Estate LLC. Its application tonight is a application for preliminary and final major site plan approval with some associated C-bulk variances to construct a two-building shopping center comprising a total of approximately 26,000 square feet. One building will be entirely retail at one story at about 4,700 square feet, and the other is two stories, 21,000 and change square feet. Two stories, so it's a little over 10,000 square foot per floor, with a mix of retail on the ground floor and office on the first and second floors. The building is proposed to be occupied partially by the applicant who's here tonight for its, one of its principal offices. And in addition, we propose other sorts of site plan improvements, including landscaping, lighting, parking, and the normal sort of site improvements that you'd see from a major site plan. The property itself, it's designated as Block 502.01, Lot 57.01, in your tax maps, better known as 390 Davidson Avenue. We're a corner lot, so we have frontage on New Brunswick Road and Davidson, and we're proposing driveways from both street frontages. The property is located in the BI Business Industrial District, but it's subject to the retail district overlay, which is why we're permitted use with such a shopping center on the property. And in consultation with your staff, in addition to the site plan relief we require, we identified three bulk variances as part of this application. One related to drive aisle width. The ordinance under Section 11288 requires 26 feet for an internal drive aisle. We're proposing 25. We need a relief from Section 112, Article 4, for off-street parking. The calculation is 116 spaces required and 91 supplied. Due to the prominence of office that we're proposing, we intend to justify that as a better planning alternative for decreased parking than the ordinance requires. And third, we need a setback for the signage. 10 feet proposed, 20 feet required. That's Section 112, Article 5 of your ordinance. We have given public notice, served by certified mail, and published in your local paper pursuant to the municipal land use law. And with me tonight, I have four witnesses. I have our civil engineer, Shrinath Kotawala, from Kashi Consulting, who will provide an overview of the site plan and respond to the CME letter that we did receive and acknowledge receipt of. We have our architect, David Feldman, to go over the proposed architecture. We have a traffic engineer, Betsy Dolan from Dolan &amp; Dean. And we also have our professional planner, John McDonough, to justify the variance relief as part of this application. So unless you have any initial questions or legal questions of me, I would like to call our first witness.
Nothing from me. You can, you can go ahead and proceed.
Great. So I'd like to call Mr. Kotawala.
Mr. Flynn, just make sure they all fill in the paper on the table, okay?
Sir, you can sit over here. That's what I'm doing here. We got it. Just put your business address there. Maybe they didn't. Good evening. If you could raise your right hand, do you swear the testimony you're going to provide is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
If you could state your name, spell your last name, and give us your address for the record, please.
You have to turn your mic on and speak into your mic.
My name is Sri, S-H-R-I, last name K-O-T-D-A-W-A-L-A. I reside in Manalapan, New Jersey.
Okay. Can you go through your, the benefit of your professional credentials for the board?
Yes, I'm a licensed engineer in state of New Jersey since 1998. I obtained my PhD degree in civil engineering from Kansas State University in 1994, and practicing land use engineering since last 30 years. I have not been in front of this board, but I have worked on at least five projects in Franklin Township as engineer.
Yeah, no, you're, you're qualified to testify. And before you start, let me just ask, are, is the testimony and the plans you're about to present prepared at your hand or, and or under your direction?
Yes, myself and under my direction.
Great. So Sri, why don't you take the board through the existing conditions of the site and what we're proposing? And if you have any exhibits, I think we might have to plug in. And counsel, just for the record, anything that you was submitted as part of the application package doesn't need to be marked?
Right.
So only new, new items.
Thank you.
Okay. Good evening. Again, my name is Sri. And here is the project, just I put it on the screen. It's basically, essentially is the same drawing, which you have it as a site plan, but we just made little colors so kind of easily visible, kind of we can talk about it. So we started this project.
We'll do A1 because it's colorized.
Yep.
Go ahead. Sorry, Sri.
So this office got engaged by the developer or the applicant and the owner in, in the year 2023. And this office went through few first, like typical environmental constraint study. And we came up with, because we have a, let me describe this property. This property is kind of rectangle shape, falling on Davidson Avenue and New Brunswick Road at the south, or so northwestern corner of the intersection. It's a currently awakened property. It used to host one single-family home, which was demolished, and still we have some reminiscence of driveway and some foundation stones are left at the site. So this kind of site is not forested, but we have some, like a, there's a big knoll of tree between the stream, which is located along the westerly property line, which is a kind of a Radisson River tributary. And it carries roughly about 350 acres of drainage area. So it's a kind of a regulated stream as per DEP rules. So our office went to DEP, obtained a flood hazard area, designed flood elevation. So this, this site, basically that river creates four different kind of constraints, flood hazard area, then riparian zone, Delaware River Canal Commission Zone B, as well as the township of Franklin Stream Corridor. So whatever the green area we see on a westerly portion of the site, that is not developable. And henceforth, all the development is pushed towards the Davidson Avenue. And that was our beginning point. And then we created two separate buildings, because the owner is seeking to have his own office on a second floor of the large building we see there on a map. So retail space is to be on the first floor, and the, the small building in the front, which is going to be a single-story building, retail completely. So the second building, the bigger, larger building is a mix of retail and the office space. An office space will be occupied by the owner on the second floor. So, and that's how, basically whatever was available, we basically tried to utilize it best and, and develop the site plan. And some of the things I'll just, what we tried here, as far as the landscaping goes, lighting goes, it's typically lighting. We try not to put lighting pole too high, so we try to stay at 16 feet. We are allowed to go higher, but at 16 feet, we are trying to see that we don't spill the lighting on off-site lighting or on neighbors or. And all the lightings will have a back shield if they're facing the property lines. So that will try to reduce the light pollution during foggy days. That's usually, we say it complies, but on a foggy days, you can see a cloud. So our attempt is to reduce that cloud on foggy days. The landscaping is, we try to utilize whatever we have, the green area left on a development, within the development, and just filled up with, with the trees, like we can put any more than what we did. Some of the trees we have along the, both of the street, they are mostly a locust, which is, and as we know, when there is a power line, the trees are being trimmed and they're uneven. So most of the time, you see branches falling every, every storm event, because the trees are not well grown because of one-sided loading on a tree. Branches are only on one side, not on the both sides. So, but we will comply with the township rules, and applicant will pay, if they have to pay the fee for the tree replacement cost. So we have committed that we will make that payment if it's needed. So we will calculate how many trees we are proposing, how many trees we are cutting, and whatever the difference is, township will collect the tree replacement fund, and applicant will, has agreed to pay that money. And basically, everything else is used, then we are short of parking space, because as the auditorium told, talked about it, the building sizes are about 26,200 square feet, and anything above 25,000 is called for a shopping center criteria, which is not our property, but by the book, it's classified as a shopping center, so the number of required parking spaces is more. So henceforth, 116 is required. We are providing 91. So that, that is a bigger variance we are seeking. Others are some design variance, which is typically it requires it between the parking spaces, 26 feet township requires, we have provided 25 feet. And that's the one, basically we are seeking a variance there. Are a few other subjects. One is the loading zone. Township consultant has asked that what, how they're going to load and unload deliveries for the shopping centers. So these days, it's a, mostly it's a box man. They come in aisle, park, and people just offload it. So it's, there is no need for them to overnight park, or they don't park it there for like more than 10 minutes or 15 minutes to offload and unload. And they usually schedule the delivery at non-peak hours. But if board wants to know, I can talk about how many trees we are planting, how many trees we are cutting. If it's needed, we can, I can go through the details of all those subjects, but if board has a question, I'll, I'll repeat those things in detail. Then we are seeking two things about signs. Because of the, we have two frontages, we are seeking two signs, a ground-mounted sign on both of the streets. So that's a kind of a, like a, we seek a, like a variance there. And also the distance, distance is typically requires 20 feet from the property line. 20 feet, because of planting trees, we, we think people won't be able to see the signs. So we are seeking 10 feet instead of 20 feet. So, so those are the main thing. Otherwise, the, all the engineering comments we have, we don't see any objection, or we don't have any argument or discussion. We are able to, we are going to comply with all the engineering comments we have received pertaining to stormwater and any other design standards.
So in other words, you're in receipt of the CME review letter dated February 14th, 2025?
Yes.
And we agree as a condition of approval to comply with each and every recommendation and suggested condition contained in that letter?
Yes.
If the board would like us to go through the letter, we can, but we are happy to stip to it, whatever the board desires.
No, if you're going, if your testimony is that you're going to comply with all the review comments, that's fine. What I generally do is, you probably know, Matt, is, is, you know, talk about anything that you can't do, or would like to, you know, discuss, or can do half of, if you're going to comply, then.
No, we can, we can comply with the CME letter. Have you also had an opportunity to review Mr. Healy's letter dated February 6, 2025?
Yes.
A few of those items, I think, are appropriately addressed to other witnesses, but beginning on page three of his letter, do you want to begin addressing some of his comments as it relates to parking placements, screening, et cetera?
No, we would be able to satisfy those requirements, and.
To the extent you want to comment, or we can just do the same thing and stipulate.
It's the same thing. It's the only thing, it's like loading zone. We will not be providing dedicated loading zone here. That was commented like a couple of times in the letters. So we just request that we don't need a dedicated loading zone here.
I mean, Mark, we're happy to answer any questions from your letter.
Yeah, so when it comes to Mr. Healy's report, and turn it over to him to ask, one of the things that struck me was the, you know, site layout and the overall design and some of the comments there. So, Mark, go ahead.
Well, yeah, I'm a little, I mean, I'm a little confused about the statement you just made that you'd comply. And the reason I'm confused is some of my comments speak to, you know, some potentially significant changes to the site layout, which I think if, if you were to comply in full with my report, I mean, the first one comment that I made is the location of that, the larger building. And that even though it complies with the minimal front yard setback, that, the way that the placement of that building in that location, in the proximity to the road, and the layout, both the horizontal, vertical, you know, layout of that road, you're going to be coming up that hill, and that, that building is going to be very prominent to drivers driving up that hill, only 20 feet from the front yard setback. So my comment was that you should explore changes to the site layout to make the rear of that building less prominent, perhaps flipping the, instead of having the parking lot to the north, putting that parking lot to the south, and moving the building further to the north. The other comments that speak to, you know, perhaps some more significant changes to the site plan was, I cited in complying with the commercial design standards, the other shopping centers, nearby shopping centers on Elizabeth have much wider landscaped areas along their frontages. You know, this is, I think, a neighborhood of 10 feet, whereas the other developments are 20 feet or more. I think in some times, some places significantly more, which allows for a lot more landscaping. And the reason why that comes up is, again, one of the major themes of the design standards is to put parking lots behind buildings and out of sight. You know, and here, you know, you have the, both, along both frontages, it's basically going to be lined with parking lots. And the way that those other sites dealt with that, because they also have parking in the front, but they dealt with that by having much wider, you know, landscape areas in front of their site. So my comment was, you should be looking at those other similar developments just down the road and emulate what they did. So respectfully, I'm not sure how you address that by, well, we'll just comply with Mark's comments, without showing the board how you're going to do that.
No, I understood, Mark. I, I think the point was generally that we understood the intent of your comments and that we're willing to work with the design to incorporate your suggestions in a revised set of plans that would be, especially with, in essence, to the landscaping, to your review and satisfaction as the township planner. Now, I think Sri might have a comment about the closeness of that front building to New Brunswick Road.
So we can make an adjustment where I drew just a white line. We can just make it like, like hold this area as like a more green area. So it can basically screen largely the building. When the driver is on a North Brunswick Road, they will not see the building as much, because first 20 to 35 feet will be just covered in a vision with a screening by vegetation, evergreens, and that will not, your vision will be blocked to see the building. You might see the top like five to eight feet of the building as a, as a driver. If someone is walking, then he has a little window where the entrance is. That part, you will see the parking lot. So we, we can cut down that concern. I, I agree with it. There's two close, 35-feet-high building right next to North Brunswick Avenue. So we can make that adjustment where we can achieve that kind of screening, if that is the real concern.
Yeah, so, so, I mean, my response is, obviously, I, again, I'm, I'm not the board. And I don't know if, and I know, you know, I don't, I don't think the board is necessarily, necessarily going to make decisions on the fly without seeing a plan showing what you're discussing. You know, I had, I had recommended originally that there be a 3D rendering from that location so the board can get an understanding of what you're talking about. You know, I don't know if the board is, is going to require that if you move the building back, and if that satisfies them. But, you know, I think the board needs to see something to, 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 so they can, so they can be assured that what you're, you just described, that it won't be visible. They can't do that based on what you just did.
We, we do have an architect.
It's more than architecture. I mean, it's, it's the design, it's the site plan. And so here, here's kind of where I stand in terms of what I see. And I, I don't think Mark would have put three or four different pictures of comparable developments for your reference, had he thought that what you had proposed looked like that. I think if I was to, you know, you could do, to be kind, this could be reimagined in a much better way. I don't even see why the building's necessary, and they have to be separated. Why couldn't they be in an L shape? I mean, you would, you would accomplish multiple things that would comply with Mark's, Mark's comments. And, and I think overall, the design standards and the, the precedent set by the similar shopping centers on the corner of, on the corners of, you know, Elizabeth and Schoolhouse and Elizabeth and Old New Brunswick, could be emulated, perhaps on a smaller scale. I don't know how they compare in, in area to this or any constraints. But in other words, could be, could be emulated by, by this development with a little more creative approach to it.
Yeah, and just, and the one thing I just want to make clear, just for the board's edification and for the applicants, which is, you know, this is not Mark Healy's desire. Every one of these comments comes under the heading of commercial design standards that are in the ordinance. So this is, you know, again, trying to make it consistent with what the ordinance has set forth of what these type retail development should have. And we have precedent for how those get incorporated in site design by those, you know, retail developments on Elizabeth Avenue. So again, so that's why I've used those real-world examples. This is what this means.
I have a, an observation, and I'm not an engineer, and I don't know for sure how or if it could be done, but just looking at the site plan, I don't see why. I do see a lot of concrete along the frontages of both streets, which I do not like. I don't know why an attempt couldn't be made to have each building front on one of the streets, as Mr. Orsini mentioned. I, I think it was in his, what he might have had in mind, an L shape. Why one building can't front on Davidson closer to the street, but within the setbacks, closer to the street for the purpose of eliminating the concrete, you know, and landscaped. All the parking, I don't understand why all the parking can't be behind both of the buildings, then.
If the parking has to go on both of the buildings, because we have limitations coming from Stream Corridor, flood hazard area, and all the entire green area is not usable. So whatever was usable, we try to achieve the best out of it. I understand we can make more modification to make it more greener-looking from the, from the outside, but the, any, because the, the number of parking requirements.
Well, how are you going to make the rear of the larger building, the office building?
We just can.
I mean, look more palatable, because it has a, it has a street presence.
We can make it like a wider green buffer.
Well, I'd like to see what you come up with, but I think there needs to be, it looks like there needs to be a lot more buffering along the street frontages. And I, and I reinforce the comment that was made before, you know, Mr. Healy put pictures, examples of pictures close to you that seem to have accomplished shielding the parking from Elizabeth Avenue and to some extent, Schoolhouse Lane. This has just as much opportunity to do as good or better a job than that does. I mean, you're, the examples he showed are entirely within the retail overlay. You are also, but you're also across the street from a residential project, not, not quite the same circumstances.
So, yeah, I mean, before, Matt, before you, you can be, and yes, you can have, we can take a five-minute reset, but here, here's what I would suggest. I would suggest that, you know, you, you've kind of gotten the board's feedback. I suggest you go to the drawing board, and, and we revise the plan, and then come back with, with a better one. And to me, that would be the best use, use of this, this time. I don't think there's a need to open to the public, because I think your plan, if, if you're going to comply with the board's direction, is going to change. And I'd rather have them comment on a, a plan that will, you know, have a better, a better viability than, than something you're going to change, and then have to come back, and their comments may not be relevant to the changes that you, that you make. That is what I would suggest.
Can I say, because we appreciate that, Mr. Chairman, we've heard the feedback from Mr. Thomas yourself, and of course, Mr. Healy in his letter, we would welcome any other additional feedback if any other board members want to give us some suggestions to go back into our design.
Yeah, I think that is actually a really good idea. You've heard a couple. Let me just say one more, and then I'll open it to the board, just because this is on my mind, and we were discussing parking. The board's always been in favor of as little parking as you can reasonably justify to make the site function. You have 95, right, 91 plus four EVs?
Correct.
116 is required, and I don't think the board would have a problem with that if you can demonstrate that that functions. If you can't, I mean, you, with your site constraints and your building envelope, I mean, you may have to make that second building a tad smaller to accommodate what's necessary, but I'll, I'll leave it to you to figure out how to accomplish what we, what we guide. But, you know, that's sort of, I think where the board would go with, with, with the, you know, with, with the parking. With that, let me start to my right, because I always tend to look to my left. So let me, let me start with my right. Now, Shaw, if you have any comments, and we'll, we'll just go down the board.
The one comment I do have is, I see that you have the tension basin, kind of like in the area of concern where there might, the driver might see the building. Would it be possible to. it be possible to actually move that detention basin and dedicate that to a more landscaped area?
Okay, yes.
Thank you.
Bob LaCorte?
I pretty much agree with what you guys are saying, but I like to see more shielding, more landscaping, so you don't see the buildings as much as, much you have there.
Thank you.
Same as everyone else.
I'm fine.
You're good?
Thank you.
Ted Chase?
Well, I made up, I had down a lot of comments based on this plan. I hadn't been thinking of rearranging things as much. And I, I have to have some sympathy with you. You're working with a much smaller piece of land than the ones on Elizabeth Avenue, and that really constrains what you can do with it. And furthermore, I didn't think I would hear Mr. Healy suggest moving the building back so as to get more parking in front of the, of the left-hand building. But some comments I want to make, which can feed into whatever you do. One is that just up Davidson Avenue, there appears to be a residence. Therefore, I think you really should have evergreen buffering along that side, what's typically the top of the plans, right along the, the property line, perhaps red cedar, perhaps columna arbivite, oh, deer eat arbivite. There, I understand why you are removing practically all of the freestanding trees. There do seem to be several shown in the, the easterly corner, the upper corner on Davidson that might be possible to save. Instead, you were planning to plant new trees there. I'd always prefer, when possible, to save existing trees because then you're starting out with something at a bigger size than you would plant. I have one comment, which is really for the architect, and that is the, the two-story building. You have a staircase down at, I can't think of it, is the back of the building, although from the building's point of view, it really is. It's the end closest to New Brunswick Road. I think you ought to have an emergency exit there because otherwise, if you had a fire in the immediate vicinity of the door, which goes out to the parking lot at the upper end of the building, maybe people from the upper story couldn't get out. And I think it would be, and you don't have access into the retail stores. And even if you formerly had doors there, they'd probably be locked. So, I think that it doesn't have to be a door under normal use, but an emergency exit. Now, that's far out of what I normally get into. And in this plan, you have over on, call it the left-hand side of the building, the side toward the stream, you have seven eastern redbud trees and seven red cedars. But they're pretty much smack up against the building. And then just beyond that, you have the existing woodland. I think they're sort of wasted there. The more that you're rethinking, if you rethink the design, probably more along one of the street frontages, you have a pretty fair number of trees along the street frontages. And I do notice that in the latest version of the plans, you have, and I think this is new, but you did not submit a letter specifying what is new in the latest version, you have long lines of Japanese holly. And I wonder how high that grows, apart from the question of, because Japanese is not a native species. But if you have shrubbery along those fronts, that seems to be what other people are asking for in terms of the shielding of, of the structures. And another point is, I would assume that, at least under the present plan, your single-story retail building, that the customers are going to go in from the side toward Davidson Avenue. So, the parking lots there are the prime spaces for in-and-out traffic. So, I put the charging station maybe around the upper end of the building instead of at the front where in-and-out parking is going to be really at a, at a premium. Because if people are going to be charging, probably the employees or perhaps visitors to the offices, they're going to want to park there for a couple of hours to get a good thorough charge. And the ones you've got up at the upper end of the two-story building are just where you should have them. So, these are all some considerations that whether, however you rethink the design, I would like to contribute them.
Thank you. And the EC did mention that point about the charging station. The Environmental Commission did mention that exact same point about the charging stations.
Well, I review this a little while.
Oh, well, then, there you go.
Very, very consistent. Thanks, Ted. Those are all very helpful, Ram.
Yes. So, I had a question on the overall ratio of the office space versus the retail. Is it your intention to maintain the same two-to-one ratio?
Yes. Actually, the applicant, when we started this project, why we have two buildings? Because he's more of a professional accounting business. So, he wanted to keep active retail to be separate from his business. That's the reason we have two buildings. And that's how the whole site gets occupied. The purpose of two building was to separate active retail away from the.
Okay.
Professional accounting office. So, that's the reason we have two buildings. If we have two buildings, we cannot add more green buffers unless we cut the building, reduce the size, which applicant is ready to make it, to cut the building and add more green area. But anywhere we try to switch the parking lot, we cannot achieve two separate buildings of the same size.
Oh, right.
Unless we have to cut down the project.
Yeah.
Or we have to merge the building, which applicant always wanted to keep it separate. Otherwise, first we thought about, we could like one building and it's over. But the reason is accounting office requires some separation.
I think Chairman made the comment about the parking requirement. And I think you can make a case if it's predominantly, it looks like an office space and then less of a retail focus. And I think if we can achieve that by compacting a little bit of on the retail side.
Yes.
I think you can probably achieve both of that.
Yes.
And I think.
Well, yeah, let me just speak to that because this was an issue or discussion that we've had with the applicant, which is, this is the retail district overlay zone. Once this is built.
Yeah.
And unless the board imposes some type of conditions that we would have to track moving forward.
I read that, yeah.
If accountant's office goes in there today, 10 years from now, a pizza parlor wants to go in there, it's, it's zoned for that.
Yeah.
So, this is, in essence, this is a shopping center. Now, you know, it might be their intent to have, you know, office tenants at this time. But, you know, again, unless there's some mechanism where the board imposes, puts a deed restriction on X amount of, only X amount of retail space 10 years from now, 15 years from now, is that really going to get enforced? I doubt it. You know, the zoning officer at that time is going to go, it's retail district overlay. They're allowed to have, you know, a hair salon. It's permitted. That's, so I would suggest you consider it like that.
Right.
It's a shopping center that over time is going to have this mixture of office and retail.
And the pros and cons.
Accountant's office may replace a pizza place. The shoe store may go in place of the tax place over time.
Deed restrictions are something we have done before, as Peter just reminded me. The pros and cons of that are, are easy to see in the sense that, you know, you can deed restrict it and say it's always going to be offices. But if you don't find tenants for those offices, now you have half the building or half the site that's fallow. So, it's better, maybe better to have the flexibility to have it occupied by something else. But on a, on a related note, and then I'll finish up with, with, you know, Jen and Rebecca. But I think, I think you could accomplish what you want in terms of separating the office from the commercial use and, and gain some flexibility to do some of the enhancements that we're asking in the site. If you did, connect the buildings. And they don't have to be so physically. I mean, it could be a small breezeway. There could be some architectural treatment that makes them look like some separate use, but in truth, they're connected, but not, you know, widely separated. I mean, in some ways, I hate to say it, this is like, what everyone hates about New Jersey strip malls is just, it looks like a cookie stamped it out. Think about the design in a little bit more imaginative way, and I think you could accomplish both things. You can do it with architecture. You can do it with landscaping, where there's a, you know, some landscape treatment between the commercial and, and the office use and sort of delineate, right, with the amount of parking you have in front of the office use, which won't need to be as much as in front of the commercial. It would be obvious that, and of course, you probably won't be able to control spillover. You could put signs, but people ignore them. They ignore handicap signs. They ignore parking for accountant only. But the point is, there's things, there's, there's things you can do from an engineering perspective.
Thank you.
So, I agree with all the great suggestions that everybody made. I know you've got some reconfiguring to do. So, while you're considering changes, have you, and perhaps I missed it from these drawings, are you planning to have sidewalks along this?
We have sidewalks. All the entire North Brunswick Road and Davidson Avenue.
It's already there.
We have a sidewalk, yes.
Okay, perfect.
And also from the intersection, so if someone is like, want to walk, they can walk out of the shopping center and walk along the street, you know, go across the, this, this active adult community.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Going last is easy. I agree with all the suggestions. I have nothing to add.
Last but never least, Rebecca.
Mr. Chairman, I have a, I have a question.
Go ahead.
That's what happens when you go first.
That's fine. I can sympathize.
So, I'm looking at Google Street View from August 2023. Have any of the trees been removed on, so the mature trees are still there on Davidson?
Yeah, actually.
Not into the driveway?
Yeah. If we, if I, like, show you, like, in this area, we have like about three large trees. And there's a couple of trees here. That's it. These are like trees which can be saved. All of those are like locust trees growing with, on a power line, which are like these lines. We have like trees like here. And we have trees in this area, which we are not touching.
So, you.
So, only we are removing really is this, this three trees here, which can.
By the power lines?
Yeah. No, here I can, these are strong and decent trees, which we would like to save if it can.
So, the one that you marked red?
In the red, yes.
You're going to save?
We, we can try to save, but at the same time, we, we are looking to now move the buildings away from both of the streets. So, we are shy of space. Basically, what happens if we follow the guidance, we have to reduce the building size significantly.
Okay.
If we follow the guidance. Unless we make one building, then we can achieve, because when you make two buildings, we lose circulation areas. So.
So, I guess where I'm going with that.
An applicant has accounting business. He says, my whole focus, I'm building office at the time when no one builds the office, is because my professional field requires me a nicer office. And that's the reason he's wishing for the office. Like, no one wants to build offices these days.
So, can I just go back to the, the question? The mature trees on Davidson, are they, by the power lines, are you saving them or not?
No.
Okay.
We are, instead of that, we are planting newer trees.
These are mature trees, right?
They're mature, but like, if you look at it, they have like branch on one direction.
No, I see it. I see it. I mean, that's what happens. You know, I live in, I live in Franklin. So, I know that this, you know, they come and they, but still, they're mature trees.
Yes. So, we can plant, I'll talk to my landscape architect, and we will try to design the trees, which are not super tall, but like about 30 feet high. So, which gives it good. And also, we will see that it is a native tree. So, maintenance is less required. That we can do as a replacement.
I have one thing that does concern me a little bit. The trees on Davidson Avenue, I understand what you were saying. Some of them are affected by the power line. But there's a couple of pretty healthy-looking, good, mature, big trees there that I don't think fit the description that you're talking about. Would be nice to have them saved. I don't think they all warrant being taken down.
We'll, we'll look into it, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, I would agree with that because, you know, the power company, I think they do have qualified arborists and they, I mean, unless it's a pine tree or something, I think they attempt to trim the trees in a manner that makes them, their branch structure strong and, but yet allows the power line. So, I take Bob's comment that, you know, maybe you could evaluate. Just because they are, are there, they, they may have been trimmed for multiple years and now are free of the power lines and you're, you're kind of good to go. So, I wouldn't necessarily apply that as a blanket statement there. Bob had his hand up, and then Matt, back to Maher.
Just, just a real quick question. Can they put a berm somewhere in there so it can kind of block a little bit of the parking?
Well, you're on a hill already, right?
I'm sorry?
Aren't you on a hill already?
Yeah.
Are you kind of like, I don't know what.
I'm looking at the picture. It looks like it's going downhill.
It's going downhill. If you go west, we are going downhill.
I mean, you could screen the parking probably with landscaping.
Landscaping, yeah.
I mean, you could do berm, but I, I don't know that, I mean, it's going to take room, right? More, maybe more room than a tree. And then what are we going to ask you to do? Put landscaping on top of berm, so.
As long as it's landscaped, that's.
Yeah, yeah, for sure.
Understood. Thank you.
I'm good.
So, just very quickly, so again, going back to the trees, at the intersection of New Brunswick and Davidson, there are some mature trees that are not near the power lines. Please do revisit it.
Yeah.
And they're healthy-looking trees.
So, what we will do is, we have a tree location map. We will sit with the township professionals and, and go over to see which trees we can save really without like a kind of making something unusual where we have cut the roots because of you put a parking lot. So, we'll try to save as many possible and trying to, like, kind of, we will make it optimization between what we want to do as well as to save trees. And we'll.
I don't want to belabor the point again, but I, if you were able to creatively change this into one building, I think it would really, really create a lot of good possibilities in terms of the site plan.
Okay. We, we're going to explore that. I think we'll, we'll ask to get continued to another meeting. We have some homework. We've heard your feedback. The other thing I wanted to mention is, is if we could potentially get scheduled out in July, in the event that maybe we can schedule a meeting with Mr. Healy to go over his comments, do something informal with him and our team, if he'd be willing to do so.
Yeah. I mean, I'm sure Christine is checking now for availability. While she does that, just let me say, any, any trees you can replant on site, we, I mean, we'd love to take your money. We've taken a lot of developers' money for trees, and this Shade Tree Commission landscaped all of Hamilton Street due to that. It's great, right? But at the end of the day, that's something far down the road. It is great use. But we have a pretty healthy shade tree fund, and I'd rather see it replaced on site because it's, what is in, what the site impacts in terms of neighboring uses is more important, I think. And then, of course, anything else gets great. But, yeah, I mean, Christine, go ahead.
Ted, just for using his.
Oh, sorry, Ted.
Yeah, just one other thing. I have the impression that you based your requirement of trees to be planted on the freestanding trees that you're removing. But there's also an area at the sort of upper-left of the plans, as they're usually shown, which is shown as woodlands. But it was, are there any trees in there that are large enough that you have to take them into account in your, in the calculation of trees to be planted?
Yes. Basically, that's what we made a statement that whatever the calculation shows. Basically, that's what we made a statement that whatever the calculation shows, whatever, we cannot put the trees on a site, we will put in a fund. But now, after the meeting, we realize that we will try to save as many as tree possible without losing our intent of development also. So that's why we will seek a meeting with the township professionals, and we just go over our kind of new layout, which kind of considers all of the comments we heard here today.
Okay. Matt, I have July 16th, 2025 available. You want to confer with your professionals and see if that's good for them?
Nobody's in Cancun? No?
Okay, so...
Let me make sure I'm available.
Unfortunately, I'm not in Cancun, but...
Yeah, me either.
While you're doing that, just because we have heard you tonight, and we have, whatever public is here to hear this, you will not need to renotice in terms of the planning board requirements, because we recently amended our bylaws to make, make renoticing a little more prominent, because sometimes we have multiple continuations and then the public loses track. But since we have had some testimony tonight, and who's ever here for it knows, well, we'll hear when this date is, July 16th?
July 16th at 7:30.
You said, are you left?
Yep.
Okay, so this will be the formal notice that NPH Real Estate LLC, PLN 240005, will be carried to Wednesday, July 16th, at 7:30 PM in the council chambers at 475 Demont Lane. No further notification will be needed.
Just for the record...
Sorry.
Go ahead.
Oh, sorry. I need an extension letter from you so that it can, what?
I said, you're good.
Oh. I need an extension letter from you carrying it. If you think it would be all heard in one meeting, you can give me till July 31st, but if you, if you think maybe you have a couple people, you can push it out to September, even if I put you somewhere else, okay?
Yep, no problem. I can do that.
Okay.
Okay. Can we take a brief, couple-minute recess, so I can confirm with my client before I have to come back for the second one? Do you mind?
Sure, no. We'll take, we'll take five. So we'll do a five-minute bio break sl-... Matt?
Thank you. Good evening. Again, for purposes of the record, Matt Flynn from Savo Shaw Law Firm in Somerville, on behalf of Mac Realty of Somerset LLC, formerly known as HSU Property Holdings LLC. The application is for preliminary and final major site plan approval with C variance relief in connection with a about 65,000 square foot addition of warehouse space to an existing warehouse and office facility. The site's designated as Block 51706, Lot 1511 in your tax maps, and better known as 400 Cotton Tail Lane. The applicant is here actually with an identified end user, recently closed on the property, and will be able to provide some operational testimony, traffic, et cetera, so that you're not left in the unfortunate position of looking at a warehouse application without an end user. So we do have an end user here tonight. The property's in your BI Business Industrial Zone, which, based on the ordinance that was in effect at the time, is a permitted conditional use, provided we're not close to a residential zone and we're subject to public water and sewer, which our team can confirm we are, and therefore, we are a permitted conditional use in the zone. With me tonight, I have four witnesses and a fifth, if you'd like to hear from the applicant. I have Craig Stires, our professional engineer, our architect, Chris Howe. Traffic, we have Betsy Dolan from Dolan &amp; Dean. And planner, we have John McDonough. Notice has been provided, served, and published in accordance with the municipal land use law. So unless there are any questions, I'd like to call Mr. Stires.
Mr. Chair, let me just explain a quick procedural thing. So Mr. Flynn just indicated this is a conditional use. So if the board recalls, at one point warehouses were permitted in the BI zone, council passed two, two different ordinances. One made warehouses a conditional permitted use, subject to certain requirements, and then subsequently, the township passed an ordinance that eliminated warehouses altogether. At the time this application was submitted and deemed complete, it was basically between those two ordinances. So this, so basically, this is a, as Mr. Flynn said, this is a conditional permitted use, and when, and when that is, when a use is a conditional use, that means they can come to the planning board for a conditional use approval, provided they meet, provided they meet all of those conditions. If they didn't meet one of those conditions, they'd before, they'd be before the zoning board for a D3 conditional use variance. So in addition, so I just wanted to explain that, Mr. Flynn did, but I wanted to give a little bit more background to see who understood, you know, why you're here and why it's a conditional use. So they're here for site plan approval, whatever variances they may have, but then, and also conditional use approval. So part of that is, they need to provide some testimony, just verifying that you meet those conditions.
Right. And we, I'll proffer, but of course, our staff and consultants will confirm, but we do meet the conditions that were established in the ordinance that made warehousing a conditional use in the BI zone. So Mr. Stires, have you been sworn in? He is not. If you could raise your right hand, do you swear the testimony you're going to provide is the truth, all truth, and nothing but truth?
I do.
If you could state your name, spell your last name, and give us your address, please, for the record.
Craig Stires, S-T-I-R-E-S. Address is 43 West High Street, Somerville.
Now, Craig, you've testified in front of this board many times. Have your professional credentials changed at all?
No.
You were qualified.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Stires, do your thing.
The existing site is located on the easterly side of Cotton Tail Lane, between Pier Street and Campus Drive, and it's essentially bounded by warehouses on all sides. In fact, there was a recently, I think it's actually completed by now, just to the north, two warehouses on one site of approximately 120,000 square feet each. Again, I think that was just recently completed altogether. The lot is known as 400 Cotton Tail Lane, or Lot 15.11, Block 51706, and contains 8.3 acres. As Matt and Mark kind of went through, it's located in the B1 Zone, Business and Industry Zone, which is, the proposed use is a permitted conditional use. It is not within 500 feet of a residence, and it is serviced by public sewer and water, which I believe that are the conditions that we need to meet to be that permitted conditional use. Excuse me. The property is also occupied with an existing two-story, 25,000 square foot office in the front portion, and a, connected to it on the backside, it's a one-story, 30,000 square foot warehouse building. The site has access on both the north and south, south sides of the property, and currently contains 220, 221, 11, 221 spaces on the north side of the building, and three loading docks on the south side. The rear portion of the site is basically undeveloped. It almost seems like it's the, the excess fill that was pushed back to construct the original building, but is essentially all grass with a drainage way, drainage ditch that drains from the northerly parking lot to the south. And there also is a tenants' court in the back portion of the property in the northeast corner. There's a detention basin, existing detention basin located on the front of the property along Cotton Tail that controls the runoff from the original project to construct the, the existing building. There is a small, isolated wetland in the southeast corner, which we have both, received both an LOI and a general permit to fill from the DEP already. One of the concerns, I think, from Darren's letter, was the number of parking spots and, you know, the, the use, current use and what's going on. And I was told by the, our original client, who owned the property since probably early 2000s, they did apply in 2004 for a site plan approval, and what they were contemplating was to convert that existing warehouse space to office space because of the market trends, and hence the reason for the 221 parking spots. They constructed the parking and never converted the warehouse due to market conditions, ironically. So that is the reason, that's why, why there is so much parking there, and if you ever drive by, there's never any cars in it. Again, as mentioned, the property is not located within 500 feet of a residential zone and is serviced by both public and sewer and water. What we are looking to do is to construct a 64,515 square foot warehouse addition onto the back of the property, which would be connected to the existing warehouse portion. To construct that warehouse, we would have to, we have to remove some of the parking on the north side. That would still leave us with 140 parking spaces, which meets the requirements of the, of the project. We will be eliminating the existing loading and constructing new, nine new loading docks that would be going into the, the new addition. Finally, we would construct a fire lane access drive along the easterly side of the proposed addition, and that would accomplish the truck circulation as well as the appropriate fire access around the building. And as far as the stormwater management, the existing basin will remain unchanged, and we have made it so that there's really no impacts to it as far as any additional impervious. The new addition would drain towards a new bioretention basin that would be constructed in the back of the property, and that would ultimately drain down towards Cotton Tail. But it does accomplish the stormwater regulations that were implemented last year, so that takes care of the current and future designs. As Matt said, that, you know, when we originally designed this, we had a, really no potential tenant. We do have a tenant now, Mac Boring, who was previously located on Belmont Drive. We have talked to them, and, excuse me, they expect to have about 40 employees, 20 employees in the office, 20 in the warehouse, so obviously, we have ample parking for the new tenant. They expect about two to three trucks per day, tops, and maybe less than that. So again, really not a, a big traffic generator. Again, as mentioned, we currently have proposed 136 physical parking spaces, and then the four EV would put us up to the 140. Five ADA spaces, as I mentioned, the nine loading docks. And as far as any variances for the project, the only one I believe is the length of the loading space itself. So if we were to have a WB67, that would be approximately 146 feet we would need, and we have 142. And you can see that the, the loading spaces are angled so that, and we have shown that that sized truck can circulate out of those spaces and around the back of the building. And really, that's it. I mean, again, as far as the landscaping is concerned, we are not changing the front of the site, so what you see is what you get as far as along Cotton Tail. You can see that the proposed building is set back behind the existing building. Even the existing loading is being removed and pushed further back, and it is being landscaped minimally, but there is additional trees along that drive and in front of the loading. And then any of the tree compensation is accomplished in the back. And I think, one of the comments that I think Marky made, that there's probably some of the additional trees we could save, and I, I would agree with that. I think we have been, we've probably submitted two or three times, going back and forth with CMA. So I think we've accomplished a lot of the comments and concerns related to the project to this point. And I think with the latest revision, we can probably save some more trees along the back, and probably on the north side as well. But that's essentially it. I said, I mean, we have one variance, and like I said, everything is towards the back.
Now, Craig, you mentioned that you have 140 spaces and you broke them down. You still only have these 40 employees, so are you still in, have more parking than you probably would ever need?
Yeah. Agreed.
And, and so, for that reason, is there, are there areas that could be landscaped that are now paved?
I think another comment that Mark made was to try to have some more landscape islands along the northerly side. Based on our new tenant and the number of spaces, I would, I would agree that with Mark that we could probably put, if it's okay with the board, to get a variance for maybe 135 spaces, and we can probably put five or, five islands or so along that northerly side to accomplish, you know, some additional landscaping.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure the board will look favorably on that.
What about the possibility of land banking?
The, the only thing I, my reservation on that is all the, we're not constructing parking. It's all there. So it would be more costly to, to remove it. I mean, we do have three or four in the, and you can see in the upper-left corner, we could bank them if, if we had to, or get an additional variance to not put them in.
And it was a while ago that I reviewed these plans, but the northerly curb, is that existing?
Yeah. All that, all that curb, all that parking there is existing.
Along the northerly property line, okay.
Yeah. I mean, if we were constructing it, I would agree with you to, to bank it.
Yeah.
But unfortunately, it's there, so...
Is there any portion, is there any portion in that northerly part of the site where the, where the parking lot is proposed, where, is any of that currently landscaped?
No. The only part would be right here. This is, we're adding to, to accomplish the 140 right here. So we could bank these or just not build them.
Yeah, I mean, that's up to the board, and then it's...
Well, I mean, I'll let you bank them in case you need them in the future, but don't, don't build it if you don't need it.
Right, right.
And then, if you can add the islands, I mean, I don't, as, as much as, you know, we, we look at impervious surface, impervious coverage as a bad thing, like you said, it's there. So I think it's a reasonable compromise to say, take out what you need for the landscaping and, and leave the rest, only because, you know, who knows what might happen in the future, and if you did need more parking, and then we're ripping stuff out again, so that's not cool, so...
Maybe the market conditions will change for a while.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't make that bet. Does, does the board have any other questions for Craig? In terms of CME, by the way, just before I go to Ted, anything there that you need to discuss, or you can comply in their report and all that?
The big stuff has been accomplished.
Okay.
The rest is technical, and then, you know, we've, we've worked with Darren to get to this point, so...
Yeah, that's fine, as long as you can comply, and there's nothing you need to discuss with Ted.
I just had one thought, where you have the two sets of, two rows of parking facing each other.
In the center.
What will be a sort of a cut-in between the office building and the new building. You could use the type of island that I've always heard was invented by Bruce Hamilton of our Rutgers Horticulture Department, I think it was at that time, where you have a little, a little diamond right where two, four parking places intersect, and since your wheels are always back of the front of the car, that generally leaves space to put in a little diamond-shaped space, and you can put a tree in it. Always wanted to be able to suggest that. Always wanted to be able to suggest that. And here's, here's an example. One other very different thing, and I can't, just passed over this and trying to scan up and down in the laptop, there's quite a few comments from the Canal Commission about the detention basin and whether it meets certain requirements that you.
So we have, we have all, yeah, we have all of our approvals except the Canal Commission. We did submit to them once, so we got the one review.
Yeah, the Canal Commission never gives final approval until after the municipality has.
Right. And the other thing that complicated things was midstream of this is when the new rules kicked in last year. So as you know, just the state, I mean, the DRCC is not the same rules as the state. So what we did was to get us to this point here is let's take care of the state and the town.
Yeah.
And we will come back and, but we have redesigned to try to accomplish all the comments from the Canal Commission. We just have not resubmitted to them yet, so.
Yeah.
But I mean, just the staff report is this much. Now we have to do a whole nother one for the Canal Commission, so it's crazy.
Well, we, we generally don't too, too much with outside staff reports because you have to comply.
Right.
And if the plan were to change, then you'd come back to us and say, oh, this. So I would assume at this juncture that having one round, you probably are fairly confident that you're not going to have to make major changes to satisfy them. How do you feel about the Ted suggestion about the diamond, just so we can wrap that? Is that a possible thing in that location or not?
I mean, in that location there, we do have three new trees already. I think it would be more beneficial to be in line with Mark's suggestion to break up that northerly edge more so than the internal. I understand what you're thinking about, but I think I'd, I'd rather put those full islands in and remove the part, entire parking spot along that northerly side to break things up a little bit more.
Yeah, well, you have parking lot, parking spaces to spare unlike our previous applications.
Right.
You can do that, no.
I mean, we can look into it.
Yeah.
But I think, I think for purposes of this exercise, we would amend the application to formally request relief from the parking if 140 is required and we eliminate five to accomplish that design, we would ask for that as a, as an additional C variance.
Yeah. No, that's, that's not an issue.
Particularly when you have a user signed up with.
Yeah, makes a lot easier, yes.
Albeit, that's not something that the board would be able to adjudicate the application on. Anybody else have any comments for Craig or questions for Craig?
A few, a few questions.
Yeah.
So Craig, comment number one, what is the impervious coverage with the latest plans? And the reason I question that is that between this last set and the set that preceded it, you, you added, I guess in response to the, to John House, you added the driveway around the back, but then the impervious coverage didn't change.
I confirmed that, I think at some point when I was going through your, it was 58.75.
58.75, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. And again, the reason I bring that up is just to make sure that they weren't, you weren't creating a variance.
Right, right.
And then how many, okay, and then this leads to the next question. I wasn't able to confirm, so Schedule Six requires one tree for every 2,000 square feet of paved area. Do you know what, then what the requirement would be and how many trees you're proposing? The reason I'm asking that again is it's, if you don't comply, it's a variance.
And I think we did comply, but again, oh, that, I was talking about the replacement. I thought we did comply, but I'm not positive on that.
Okay, maybe at some point, maybe when the other folks are coming up, you can look into that and get back to us. Again, we just need to know if, if, I wasn't able to review it because I wasn't sure what the impervious was. It's basically, it's one tree for every 2,000 square feet of, of pavement.
Okay.
So whatever that happens to be, I, I did a very rough calculation. I think it's around 43 trees required. So if you can, again, that's my back of the envelope calculation. So at some point tonight, if you could just look into that and just let us know whether you intend to comply with that or not.
And Mark, is that new pavement or just what exists on site?
Total, total. So the way I calculate it is it's the total site area, and then you get the impervious coverage minus the building coverage, that's going to be your pavement.
Okay.
And then that's, you multiply that by, or you divide that by 2,000.
2,000, right, okay. I mean, right now, we're proposing 71 trees.
I think you'll comply. I mean, what we would say is the board is, you know, you'll, you'll plant them on site or you'll make a contribution to the shade tree fund and then you can, when you figure out, you know, how you're going to do your landscaping and your parking, how much you're actually going to take out, you know, that'll, that'll sort itself out.
This is a different, there's, there's two, there's two, there's always two tree requirements. So there's usually, one is, comes from the, comes from the Land Development Ordinance.
Yeah.
Which is the one tree for every 2,000 square feet. If they don't comply, you can grant a variance if you choose. The other one comes from Chapter 222, which is that replacement thing, that you can't, you can't give them relief. They either have to do it on site or pay minimum. I just wanted to make sure.
No, no, I, that's, that's helpful, thank you.
That's why I'm asking, because if they don't comply, they need a variance. But it sounds like they're going to be fine.
I think he's, I think he's calculating it right now.
I might, it may take some more testimony from others.
Okay.
That's okay. Any other questions for Craig on anything? I think everything's really straightforward. While, while Craig burned some lead in his pencil, who's your next witness there?
I have our architect.
Okay, let's go there.
Mr. Ha, you want to come up? Do I need you? Okay. Come on down.
Just, you gonna get sworn in?
If you could raise your right hand for me, do you swear the testimony going to provide us the truth, all truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
If you could state your name, spell your last name, and give us your address, please, for the record.
Chris House, first name is Chris, and last name is HAO Howe.
And can you go through the benefit of your credentials for the board?
Okay, I was a graduate from Georgia Tech, Master Degree of Architecture in the eighties, and practiced many in Manhattan for the first 10 years, and then moved to Jersey to continue the practice.
You're a licensed professional architect in the state of New Jersey.
And New York.
And New York, oh, you qualify, okay.
Just general question, as you can see, your plans that were submitted to the board are on the screen. Can you just take the board generally through your architectural design for this project?
The design is very simple, just basically for the addition of this, this warehouse that the, the previous owner required. And the work with the site engineer, Craig, that we get to the maximum allowed to build up this addition.
And what type of material is the building going to be made of?
Okay, the, the addition, we're going to use a precast concrete, which is 40 story high, I mean, 40 feet high. And we use this, you know, modern prevailed type of precast concrete.
And would you stipulate for the record that the rendering that's shown on the screen now, that what will be implemented at the site will be substantially consistent with what is shown on the plans there?
Yes.
Okay. And anything you want to add about any design flourishes, colors, or anything that you have proposed as part of the design?
We, we tried to match the color, not the material, just the color, to try to match the existing. But existing is pretty much like a very white in color. So we tried to just add a little bit of tone to make it more like a, a little bit like a warm gray tone for the facade.
I don't have any further questions.
I just, just a couple of things I'm reading here in Mark's report that I want to make And maybe this is more for Craig, but I, I think you can probably answer it. Solar ready?
Yeah, I don't think that's, yeah.
Yeah, gotta be, okay. And screening and mechanical equipment.
Do we have, is it, do we have mechanical equipment screening on, I guess, the, the roof?
Oh, the roof is built structurally, can, can hold these rooftop units, if they need in the future. Just right now, we just have some in the, in the warehouse interior, we set up a few unit heaters for the winter purpose. In the summer, there is just ventilation on the wall.
Okay. I, I think what we're asking more is whatever mechanical equipment is on the roof, is there screening architecturally, like a parapet, or is it set back so that you don't see it? Or whatever the design standard is?
Yeah, pretty much in the middle of the warehouse, if they have it.
Okay. Mark, are you okay with that? Does that answer your question?
Yes.
All right. Anything else in your report architecturally, Mark, that you want to highlight?
No, I think they've addressed everything.
Any questions for the board for the architect?
Great.
Okay, who's next?
I would call the applicant just to briefly describe his business and confirm the testimony Craig gave.
Actually, let, let's hold that. I'd rather hear your witnesses because truthfully, we can't really take into consideration whether you have a tenant or not. And unless there's something unique to the tenant that you're not describing in your testimony, we wish them all the best. So maybe, maybe Betsy and then your planner to testify for the variances, that will go?
That's great. This would be the first industrial application that I've had where the board said that. So I appreciate that.
Well, I mean, it's a warehouse and you have a tenant, which is a great thing. I mean, we get the complaints, right, that warehouses are laying fallow and, you know, they're built on spec, which of course, the board can't take into consideration when making a ruling. It's not within our legal purview to do. So we're appreciative, and I don't want to undersell that.
Thank you.
But whether they're warehousing widgets or whatever, it's immaterial. Betsy, I actually wouldn't necessarily called you up given what I hear the traffic, but I feel so bad after you came out for Onyx and last one and this, then I want to like, why the hell am I going to Franklin? So you're, you're up.
Great, thanks.
All right. Do you swear the testimony going to provide us the truth, all truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
If you could state your name, spell your last name, and give us your address, please, for the record.
Elizabeth Dolan, D-O-L-A-N, Dolan &amp; Dean Consulting Engineers LLC, 181 West High Street, Somerville.
The board is quite familiar with you, Betsy, and your qualifications have remained the same?
Yes.
Please proceed.
Did your office submit a traffic impact analysis for this application?
Yes, dated February 22, 2023.
Okay, can you provide its findings for the board?
Sure. Thank you for having me testify, even though there's not much traffic on this application. But it, it's interesting in that we collected traffic counts back in February 2023, and the existing building has about 55%. Let me just make sure I get it right. You have 55% warehouse, 45% office, which is a high office component for warehouse. And so it was really no surprise that the driveway volumes that we counted reflected a rate almost twice that of the ITE's warehousing rate. So we, we prorated those numbers based on the proposed building area, which will then result in 80% warehouse, 20% office, which is a little bit more typical for an office. ITE recognizes that there's ancillary office space, but when you're at 45% office in the existing condition, that's why I think we, we revealed such high traffic counts. So even though there's going to be more warehouse in the future, we applied the existing driveway volumes, prorated them based on the increase in building area, and we came up with a total of 42 driveway movements in the morning peak hour. That's 37 coming in, five exiting, for a total of 42. And then zero entering and 52 exiting during the evening peak hour. And when you think about the testimony you just heard with about 40 employees, those numbers make sense. And again, it's a conservative projection in that it's much higher than the ITE would generate for traditional warehouse. For the before and after, we calculate level of service B, as in boy, coming out of the driveway during these peak hours. The left turn coming in is an A, and that does include the truck component of about three truck trips in the peak hour, which you heard from Craig that we're looking at maybe two to three trucks total max over the course of a day. So I think the analysis is certainly on the high side and it shows acceptable levels of service. And Craig took you through the site plan, so I don't think I need to do anything with that. But I would conclude that the site layout is certainly appropriate for the trucks as well as passenger vehicles. There's maneuvering room that is sufficient for both the heavy vehicles as well as passenger vehicles. And I think we've covered the parking. I think there's definitely a substantial supply. And I would concur with the findings that the board just discussed with Craig in terms of not building those extra four, and then maybe we can lose a few for landscaping purposes.
I don't have anything, I don't have anything further of this witness.
Board, any questions for Betsy?
Just one question. Do the trucks go in and out of that same driveway? Or do they go around the building?
They're going to go around the building. That's how the truck circulation exhibit was prepared by, well, you know what, let me just double, double, double check that because now you got me second guessing. I think they may be doing both because they're going to back into those angled spaces. So they're going to come in, yeah, they're going to come in the, what is that, the southern driveway, and then back into those spaces. And then the truck circulation exhibit shows them going around the building and entering out or exiting out the north driveway.
Okay, and they can, did, did CME comment on the, can they make that turn out of the northerly driveway and not go into the opposing lane of traffic?
Looks like there's a pretty big radii there. I don't know, I don't recall anything in CME's letter about that. And the truck circulation exhibit doesn't take it out the driveway. It just takes it around the building to make sure we can make that, let's see, sidewalks, fire prevention.
How many driveways exist on the site right now? Just the one?
Two.
Two?
Two.
Okay.
You're not changing the radio, we're not changing. Yeah. No, there was the comment about the, as Craig said, about the, the length of the truck court, but the truck circulation exhibit shows that what's proposed will accommodate the, the maneuvering of the trucks.
The only comment we got about circulation was confirming that your emergency fire and EMT can safely maneuver the site.
Yeah, and consistent with Craig's testimony, right, that access, emergency access to the back is, is also serving a circulation around the entire building. So that's consistent with what Betsy is saying as well.
Correct.
And I would assume that, and that's why I asked if there were two driveways on site now, because if there were one, then clearly it must be a full movement, right? But it's also been functioning as a warehouse for many years, so we assume that they can make that movement.
Yeah, I think the northern driveway under existing conditions is just for passenger vehicles and then the southern driveway is for the trucks. But we're reconfiguring the entire site, so we've got that. Plus, for the fire circulation, we've got the full circulation around the building.
So I assume with the small number of trucks that Craig testified to, that you're not separating. And, and because now you're going to have much less office than, than warehousing, right? It's going to go from 55, 45 to 80, 20. You're not, you're not separating the, the truck and the car traffic.
No, and I would think that the, the primary office spaces are going to be closest to the building, and the, the northern row of parking will probably be least utilized. But with three trucks a day, the, the potential for pedestrian interaction is limited, and you can certainly see a truck coming. There's nothing prohibiting site distance around the site.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I would just suggest, again, I, I just don't know if Darren reviewed that. And the reason I'm not, the previous version of the plan, you didn't have the driveway going around the building, is that correct?
It was probably between the first and second.
Okay.
Because that's when John House brought up, he wanted the circuit, so we incorporated both of them.
Okay. I would just want to reserve the, the ability for Darren to review that, and I think if the board is inclined to approve it. So we just want to make sure that if the- the trucks are going to go around and exit that northerly driveway, that the radii are sufficient that they can make those turns and not go into the opposing lane. I just don't know if he reviewed that.
No, I think, I think that's, that's reasonable.
We can follow up as a condition of.
I mean, and worse, worse comes to worst, you may just have to make the driveways a little wider or something, it's not going to really change, materially change it. Yep, no problem. If there are no other questions for the traffic engineer, we can finish with your planner.
There was one comment about sidewalks, I believe.
Yeah, not to construct them, because two also, yeah, don't.
So you guys are good with the waiver for that?
Yeah, I mean, well, yeah, waiver, but I think, Mark, in Mark's report, he said that they, they did make a contribution to sidewalk fund, is that correct, Mark?
That's commonly a condition when the board waives their requirement.
So that would be acceptable.
Okay.
Bad and cleanup is our plan, or John McDonough?
Appropriate analogy.
Do you swear the testimony you're going to provide is the truth, all truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
If you could state your name, spell your last name, and give us your address, please, for the record.
Sure, hi, hi there, everyone. My name is John McDonough, M.C., capital D-O-N-O-U-G-H. Business address 101 Gibraltar Drive, Parsippany, New Jersey. I'm the project planner.
Licensed professional planner, state of New Jersey?
Current and in good standing.
Excellent.
Also AICP national.
We offer him as an expert.
Education from Rutgers, Doc Hamilton was my teacher. Applauding Mr. Jay somewhere.
Accepted.
Thank you. Mr. McDonough, we do require 1C variance, as noted in the CME report. Can you provide the planning justification for that variance?
Sure, we can, and I've also, I have some placemats if the board would like to see them, hard copies of aerial photographs, not necessary, you know your site. Again, see.
They're just, sorry. They're just colorized of what we have in the plans, essentially?
They're, they're.
They're drone photos.
They're drone photographs to show you that we're, we're putting this addition in a pocket on the site, we're not.
Yeah, we know that, we all have Google Earth, yeah.
Fair enough.
Thank you.
We're going to keep this real short, because the relief that the applicant is seeking is, is a very short list here. It's a conditional use, complies with all the specific conditional use requirements. You just heard Craig talk about that. Mark did ask that we check the box in compliance with the general conditional use requirements. There's about four or five of them. All of them were complied with as well. Paraphrasing, the use is listed as a conditional use on Schedule Number One. That's based on the Controlling Ordinance 437122, which is that little window of time that you had where this application was made, where this is a conditional use. The use is designed and located to protect the public good. I'm paraphrasing your ordinance. This is an infill development, it's going in a pocket on the site, unconstrained, developable land that is compatible with its industrial surroundings. Adequate landscaping and screening are provided, adequate parking is provided. You just heard Betsy talk about supply meets the actual demand. And lastly, this use is going to conform to all your B1 regulations but for, actually two variances that are needed here. One, the parking, you just heard about the testimony there, I'll fall back on the expert testimony of Betsy before me, that this is a better zoning alternative for the property. That's the C2 balancing test, where the benefits of efficient land use and greening up the site with those additional bullnose islands would substantially outweigh any detriments. I'll add on, we are 96.4 percent compliant with the parking requirement. Whenever we look at a variance, we look at the degree of departure from the zone plan, and I think we can conclude that the degree of departure here is not substantial. Similarly, the applicant needs relief for deficient loading berth depth. 147 is required, 142 is what's proposed. Coincidentally, that's about 96.4 percent compliant as well. Again, not a substantial departure from the zone plan, so we think on balancing, this is squarely going to land where the project positives would substantially outweigh any negatives. These loading bursts are not going to have vehicles sticking out in the circulation lane or the aisle where it would impede the free flow of traffic around the site. All said, it's a good application. You've heard testimony to support the conclusion that the statutory criteria for the C relief were met. Is that a design exception for the sidewalk, to the extent that it is? It meets the lower standard of reasonableness and impracticability, so I would offer that that standard is met as well. In conclusion, the statutory criteria for the very minor relief that the applicant is seeking are met, and approval is warranted.
Thank you, John, no further questions.
And unfortunately, John, you said the word substantially, so I can't channel Jim Clark and then say, does you believe it substantially outweighs, because you already said that.
Speech to the punch.
Yeah. Any questions for the planner? So since we have created the variance that we're, that you're seeking for the parking in terms of that, let it reflect, record reflect that the applicant could be fully compliant, but is a better, better planning alternative to reduce the parking and, and increase the landscaping?
Just want to, so just to confirm the numbers, we're going to have 135 spaces, but we're going to build out 131 in Bank Four? Is it four or five that's in the corner? Yeah, I was going to say, just, I'm just trying to figure out, make sure we got for the record.
So right now, we have 136 physical spaces, proposed. So if we take five off, it'd be 131.
Okay.
Physical, and then the four EV would put us at 135.
Okay.
Fantastic. Okay, make a motion to open to the public for any comment on this application.
Second.
All in favor? We need to open to the public for any comments.
I think the one person that was here probably just left. Seeing no takers, move to close. Somebody seconded?
Second.
All in favor?
All.
Matt, any summation to make?
Yeah, I just want to confirm that before I conclude that we don't need any relief from that, trees per square foot requirement. Craig, were you able to confirm that?
It looks like we need 52, and we're proposing 71.
Thank you.
And we're going to have more when we put those islands in.
Thank you.
So with that, this application is for an expansion of a permitted use in the zone. It's conditional. We feel we've testified that we meet the conditions in the ordinance. We've requested very minor variance relief as part of this application. One bulk variance would be required, but for entertaining the suggestion of the board to eliminate more parking and impervious cover to further improve our proposed landscaping plan for the site. And so considering that, we feel that we're entitled to a site plan approval with the variance relief requested, and we thank you for hearing us tonight.
Thanks, Matt. Thanks, Matt. Make a motion to approve with the variance for a loading dock depth, the variance for 135 parking spaces, acknowledgement that the conditional use standards are met, the condition that the applicant will meet, or will submit whatever evidence is needed to CME for reviewing the turning radii at the driveway, and any and other, and, and has agreed to comply with all other staff reports as per testimony. Is anything substantive? Okay, that's my motion.
Second.
I do?
That's me.
Thank you.
Bob did the second?
Yep, Bob did the second.
Okay. Councilman in Barson?
Yes.
Theodore Chase?
Yes.
Robert LaCourte?
Yes.
Shaw Keller?
Yes.
Jennifer Ragnow?
Yes.
Mahir Rafiq?
Yes.
Robert Thomas?
Yes.
Rebecca Hilbert?
Yes.
Chairman Orsini?
Yes.
Thank you for your time this evening.
Seeing as we have no other business tonight, I do not believe. Our next meeting will be.
June 4th.
June 4th, same.
Here in this building.
Same bat time, same bat jam.
Right, it won't be till July that we go back out to Route 27, so, but I usually try to, July, 9th, actually.
Okay, okay, well, with that, motion to adjourn, I'll make it?
Second.
Okay, have a good night, folks.